Infrastructure, structure presented by presented by Ted Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, as paneling community. My name is Evan Porter, I'm the executive director of infrastructure, infrastructure. I'm here today to talk about about the lead and copper provisions compliance for the city. For the city. I think it's an important, it's an important topic to cover, to give to and true and accurate information into our community regarding something that's really important. So I want to back up a little bit. The, the City Hamilton Water System as a whole, as a whole, just to frame it. Our public water system was established for the city in eighteen eighty-four. Eighty-four. It's quite incredible, incredible. And it's, it's water system that's fully integrated, we integrated. It includes water supplies, treatment, transmission and distribution. We have two water treatment facilities, the South Water Treatment Plant and the North Water Treatment. And we draw water from the Great Miami Berry Valley Aquifer. That's our source water. Source water. Our transmission and distribution system consists of approximately three hundred and thirty miles of water main pipe. Their main pipe, various sizes, and we have storage facilities as well as pumping stations. Stations. And we currently provide water service to approximately twenty-four thousand four hundred customers. We identify those by meters, meters, who represent diverse mixtures, residential as well as smalls and large and large and industrial customers. So this is an image regarding a residential configuration. The majority of our customers are residential and I think it's easier to speak through this diagram. Diagram. But wanted, but want to talk a little bit about this diagram. So if you're looking at the far left side, that's the water main. Water main. So this is like a section cut through, so you're like looking underground, you're going above ground, divided by the, the green line there. So left side, that's the water main in orange. And off of the water main, water main, there is, there is a public side service and service in orange there. Orange there. And then you'll see dividing, dividing line in red dashed. And that's what's called being curb stop valve. So the curb stop valve exists underground. And typically, typically, this is like looking at one side or the other of the sidewalk. Sidewalk. And usually you'll just see like a little metal cap and actually underneath there is a physical valve. And then from that valve going to the home, home, that's the private side. Service line, so that's the water service line going into a home. And then once you get inside the home, there's a meter inside the home and that usually shut off valve. Shut off valve. Distribution is your, and fixtures, et cetera, inside of a home. So that's the very basic residential configuration. We'll come back and talk about why this is important here in a minute. The current city ordinance, we're policy is the customer, customer, the property owner is responsible for, for service line from curb stop valve, valve, and that to the home is obviously everything with everything. So the utility is responsible from main up to, to curb stop valve. Devising lines, it's the responsibility of the of the customer, where he's owner, where the owner. And, and the, the customer and owner are also responsible for maintaining that service line to a state of good repair. So obviously it can't be leaking, if it's leaking, it has to be repaired, has to be repaired. Okay, so I want to talk a little about regulation. So, so the City Hamilton, City Hamilton Water System, or it's public water system. And all public water systems are regulated, regulated by the Ohio EPA Division of Drinking Groundwaters. Our public water system is classified as a community water system. And in Ohio, around four thousand four hundred public water system, I want to say serve approximately eleven million people daily, daily. The rules for the Ohio Public, Ohio Drinking Water Systems were adopted under the Ohio Revised Code. And the division, the Ohio Division of Drinking Groundwaters, those rules will prolegate it under the US EPA. Safe Drink and Save Act. So I think it's just important, it's important how like there's federal, federal regulations that go to state regulations through the EPA that are, they come down to the local level and we're regulated. That's kind of like the cascading regulations. Okay, so we're going to talk about lead and copper in public water system. So in nineteen ninety-one, the US EPA created a, something called the Lead and Copper Rule to protect the public health, primarily by reducing water corrosivity. All community public water systems are subject to the Lead and Copper Rule requirements. And in twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, the US EPA proposed a Lead and Copper Rule revisions, which is also called the LCRR. And that was finalized on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And as a result, the Ohio EPA has notified all community public water systems, including the City Hamilton, that they will need to comply with the Lead and Copper Rule revisions. Okay, so let's talk at a very high level about how the potential sources of lead in drinking water. So this is an image from the EPA website. And this is a little bit of a different section cut. It's still a section cut, but instead of like the side of a house. So the water main you'll see is on the bottom, the bottom. And then the service lines are in the center of the house there. So you can't really see, I don't think you can see too well and I apologize for that. But the potential sources of lead in drinking water. There is a, there is a potential for a lead gooseneck. Connection, connection. Lead water service line, and that can either be on the utility side or the customer side. Galvanized pipe, so galvanized pipe is metal pipe that has a galvanized coating. And, and that galvanized coating has zinc coating, and in that zinc coating, there can be lead within. Copper pipe within homes that has lead solder. And also fixtures and hosters can have lead within the fixtures, fixtures. So these are all, are all potential sources of lead drinking water. And, and the City Hamilton's current practices, so our current practices are intended to establish requirements to replace all damage. So service lines that may contain lead within the city in accordance with federal and state EPA regulations. These practices have been developed to comply with these regulations. They apply to all City Hamilton projects to replace service lines that may contain lead materials. And the City Hamilton provides residents with resources which could help to prevent or reduce exposure to potential lead contaminants within municipal drinking water supply lines or other potential sources of lead exposure. So that's kind of giving some background on it. So let's go back to the Lead and Copper Rule Revision and the compliance with that. So in order to comply with the Lead and Copper Rule revisions, the City Hamilton is required to meet several requirements. And completed on October fifteenth of this year. We submitted an inventory of all the water service lines to the Ohio EPA. So essentially every water service line, there's an inventory. It was submitted to EPA. That inventory is publicly accessible. And we released an interactive map regarding lead service lines the community has available. So we'll, we'll actually pull that up here in a minute. But essentially that is a, an interactive online map where you can go and search property by property. And it will say whether, whether there's a potential for a lead service line or not. And then no later than November sixteen, twenty twenty-four, we must notify customers with lead. Galvanized required replacement or lead status unknown. Water service line, service, the status of that line. So essentially we're going to send out to mailers to, to the residents. So the residents which are customers, as well as property owners, if the property owner is different, the person residing at the address. So they'll receive, they'll receive letters in the mail regarding, regarding this information. So to assist the City Hamilton with our compliance, we engaged a company by the name of Blue Conduit. We actually received a fifty thousand dollar grant to utilize the services of this company. And they helped us to develop the lead service line inventory. And they actually helped us with, helped us with predicting the material of water service lines using existing data, targeted data, artificial intelligence and machine learning algorithms. And so to provide a little bit more clarity on this, so we have, we have twenty-four thousand four hundred for meters. And, and the service line has a utility side and a customer side. And we actually don't have confirmation of, of the utility side and the customer side as well as the exact service line material. Because the, you know, the age of the Cisco. And in order to do so, you actually have to physically, physically dig up and up. You know, you'd have to dig up and confirm the material construction for those. So because we have not done that, this company, Blue Conduit actually uses existing information that we do have. So our existing information as well as other resources. And machine learning algorithms to give, to give the, the probability of there being either, either a lead service line or not a lead service line. And that's taking information such as, and such as known service lines adjacent to those properties, the age of the structure. So after nineteen eighty-six, lead was not allowed to be used for lead service lines. So we can take information like that. So use computer learning to help us to develop this inventory. And they're helping us to develop, manage, update, publish the lead service line inventory and the map. So Daniel's going to pull up a YouTube video real quick. It's only about a minute and a half long, Kai gives a little bit more information about what Blue Conduit does.
There is a basic human right, but more than twenty-two million people in the US today are still getting their drinking water to toxic lead pipes. But which homes have them? Finding and replacing lead in our drinking water system is time consuming, costly, costly. And when not addressed quickly, a health hazard to the community members that rely on them every single day. With millions of service lines in our communities, where do we start to get the lead out the lake? Enter Blue Conduit. With Blue Conduit, you can use real time data and machine learning to estimate the material of each service line. Identify which of the thousands of pipes are made of lead. Prioritize replacements to help limit exposure for those most at risk. And establish trust and transparency with the community. We use utility data on all records of materials, tap water and other home attributes like home age and tax information to determine which homes are at the highest risk of having a lead service line. The process begins with a review of your existing data, recommending where to conduct the next verification inspections and estimating how much lead is in your city. As you inspect the replaced pipes, we update your inventory and our predictions address by dress, making the process more affordable and efficient than ever. Discover how Blue Conduit can help get the lead out. Visit blueconduit.com and schedule a demo.
Okay, so they helped us to identify, identify the potential for lead service lines as well as the known and the unknown service lines. So we do have an interactive map that is available on our website presently. So Daniel's going to pull it up really quick just to show you what it looks like. So you can go in this, you can search by address or by physical location. And it will tell you, tell you exactly, exactly whether you have a, you have a known, known lead service line, unknown status of your lead service. So to say whether, whether it's known, whether it's unknown and the likelihood of there being a potential lead service line. That's available now on our, on our website. The next steps, we'll continue to comply with the LCRR and the LCR rules. And we'll continue to educate the public. So there's a, so there's a link to website there, it's heathen-ohio, hamilton-oh.gov/lead-awareness. So there's a lot of great information there regarding lead service lines. Regarding our water distribution system, frequently asked questions, et cetera. We're going to continue to gather and analyze data, update our inventory and our map. And these are real time, these are dates, these are through a lot of different sources. So we're actually going to send out a customer questionnaire, we're going to talk about that in a minute. Through our inspectors, through our capital water reversal programs and through our water maintenance activities. So as we encounter information, we actually enter into our system and automatically updates the map. We must develop a replacement plans, which is due by twenty twenty-seven. And implement the replacement plan, so that's between twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty, twenty thirty-seven. And the plan requires replacement one hundred percent of the lead service lines. And we will continue to seek grant funding to support these efforts. So like I said, we got, like I said, fifty thousand dollars to support Luke Conduit assisting us with these efforts so far. And we have applied for several, several grants that we've not been successful at so far. But we're going to continue to apply for more grants. We're also going to send this out. So this is, this link is accessible through the map, through the map. And essentially this is a service line material survey. So essentially we're asking our customers to, to do a service line material survey for the customer side. And what it does is it kind of goes through ways to identify whether you have a potential lead, a galvanized, a copper or a plastic service line. It kind of goes through, it says different things you can do, such as like looking at the color of it. Obviously if it's kind of red, looks like a penny, that's likely to be copper. You know, lead service line, there's typically a dull grayish color. If you scratch it with a coin, it will actually, it's easy to scratch, you know, it'll kind of be shiny looking. And so what we'll do is we'll ask the customers to take a look at their service line, fill out this data sheet and take a picture of it and submit that to our teams. So we'll use that to validate our data. And that will help us to gather the information necessary to, to gather the, the status of all of our service lines. So in conclusion, just want to review a couple of things. So the City Hamilton Water System is regulated by the Ohio EPA. Which is, which is, the rules are promulgated under the federal EPA. Twenty twenty-one, the US EPA finalized the Lead and Copper Rule revisions. To comply with these revisions, the City Hamilton and all other public water systems must meet several requirements, which we just discussed. So it's not just Hamilton, it's, it's every public water system has to comply with these requirements. And so every water system is doing this exact same thing right now. Potential sources of lead drinking water include lead pipes, lead solder, plumbing fixtures. Our, the City Hamilton's lead service line inventory is publicly available. Any information can be accessed, it'll be on interactive map. Customers who have lead service lines will be notified via mail. More information can be found on the city's website or through many sources, including EPA. And all public water systems must comply with these rules. Are there any questions? I want to do a lot really fast, really fast.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First off, it's the, it's the private side of the water line. Who pays for that, the city or the?
The customer.
Customer pays for that side.
Yes, yes.
Sounds like a really dumb question, but the envelope of sending these surveys, I do get a lot of things in the mail that are just, just they're not, they're not important surveys, and sometimes they're junk mail. Sometimes it talks about, talks about buying insurance for your water, the water into your, you know, they sell insurance.
Sure, yeah, I'm sure.
This envelope is going to be such an appearance that it's going to make you, make you open it up and really spend some time on it. Because my question, my question, some folks may just throw it away.
Sure.
I'd hate to see that, I hate to see that, and it stuns me, stuff we need to know. They need to know as a, as a customer, so.
Understood.
Pick it out loud, that's all.
So Derek Ward, he's helping implement this program. And I don't know if we know exactly what the envelope is going to look like.
Sounds crazy.
We talked, we were talking to our earlier today, talking about, we're using, it's a third party company that assists in the mailings. And so we'll talk to them and see if there is anything that they can do to specifically, you know, you show like City Hamilton communication or something like that to make sure it's, it's important. I don't know if they can market it as important, something like that.
It might cost, it might cost a buck, keep it, look at it, look at it.
Yeah, and that's the reason why we're trying to, I mean, that's why I'm here as well, right? It's to provide true and accurate information to get it out to the community. Our customer service team is, is going to be able to answer questions if there's any questions whatsoever. We have a lot of information available online, we have a website, we're going to have a, a education campaign where we're going to have some Facebook posts, et cetera. Where we're going to put this information out to make sure that the community has access to, to good information regarding the subject matter.
Thank you, thank you.
On the interactive map, I know you have the ones that are unknown because you haven't, you haven't actually scanned those yet. What's your, what's your objective time that you think you'll know every, you know, all the, all? Maybe that's a tough question, but it's, you know, that you'll know what all the pipes are in the city.
Well, I would say that the more the people who fill out the surveys, give us the information, the quicker that's going to happen, right? Because that means that we don't actually have to go to those, to those residences, to those businesses and, and physically verify. So that's less work that we have to do. So the more people who can do that, the quicker we'll be able to build out our inventory. And I think the requirement is, is, do you know what the requirement is to have the inventory done by? Twenty thirty-seven, thirty-seven. So, so, so there's a long runway to actually achieve this. And to be very clear, lead service lines have existed in water distribution systems for decades and decades and decades. Nothing is different now than previously, other than the fact that there's nine rules regarding these lead service lines. So I want to be so clear that nothing has changed, right? And we, the City Hamilton has requirements through the Lead and Copper Rule that makes us, and of course we do, we maintain how corrosive the water is to prevent, prevent to, you know, to lessen the ability of the lead to get into the drinking water system, if that makes sense. So, so we're actively, have been actively treating the water accordingly because, because it is our community and many other communities and services across the nation, let service lines exist and have existed.
And so some of the ones that you already know are pretty much newer homes that you know that you wouldn't have, but, but a copper or, or a plastic in there is what you're saying?
Yeah, so after nineteen eighty-six, you weren't allowed to use lead for water service lines anymore. So certainly anything that's built after that won't have a lead service line. Then prior to that, she's using existing data, whether we have existing as-built prints or, or information that we've gathered from actually servicing different, different service lines.
One last question on this, if they'll have before nineteen eighty-six, the people after nineteen eighty-six, you're not too worried about getting a survey because you already know that or?
We still, we still want them to fill out the survey, just to have the confirmation of it.
Rare. Let's remember to have, just kind of follow up to Ken's question. For those of, for the residents and perhaps in businesses that are paperless, are you expecting to be able to send those nice people, people a survey as well?
You're saying if they would prefer to fill out a paper?
Paperless billing was billing. In turn, they're not just receiving something in the mail. You anticipate sending that and them to all of the different parcels that you have water service? Rather because many residents are on paperless, so they wouldn't see an actual bill or, or a survey. You anticipate that surveys were sent to those residents?
So we're going to include bills linked to the surveys as well. So, so it'll be, if you get a physical bill, it'll be printed on the physical bill. But if you get electronic bill because you're paperless, it'll come as a part of that electronic bill. It's going to be listed there for several reasons.
The surprise kind of.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And the other questions, the questions? Thank you for making this aware of this.
Yes, of course, I do, of course, I do. Riveting, riveting. I couldn't resist.
Okay. And now brings us finally to citizens, if there's a wish to make comment, they can speak during this part of the agenda. John cannot speak during his part of the agenda.
But he is.
Or they can, they can speak when I, for the, or vote on the council floor. One person signed, or the other sign. Dem lot.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm a question boy. Last, I should go along, Third Street, Third Street, and, um, sure you left on, you left on High Street, High Street. There's Third Street, Little Street, big potholes right there, we got a real big, we got pretty big potholes, you can't miss them, can't miss them. On the corner right there. Now the city, the city inspector, they're doing a very good job, aren't they?
Our inspectors are all on this. We appreciate you bringing to us locations of where there are issues. What street again would you?
Some Third Street, Third Street, we're right, we're turning off on the High Street. Right, right, on the north side of, we're south side, the south side, the high street going toward, 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 um, toward how? I know, Third Street going towards High Street, turn left, turn left.
I'm, I'm taking note of that. Make sure that, remember I see, I'll tell somebody else and the else. I get to your friend Rich and go ahead. Take note of that, okay?
We're just expecting royalty, they're not doing a good job, we're like that for weeks, yeah, for weeks. It's right here, it's city hall too.
Jim, thanks for bringing, thanks for bringing it to our attention. And we'll make sure that we use, that we take a look at that, look at that, I will get back to this, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
How good, how good.
You too, you too. Yeah, brings us to the Senate Agenda, Senate Agenda. And that concludes all staff report, so caucus reports, September twenty twenty-four financial report, September twenty twenty-four, twenty-four investment report. We're going to start off with President Hall. As ties for the council can add questions to the direction, I'd comment on various reports that are covered to our attention. And the caucus agenda, I'll set the motion, so your meeting be recessed, recessed, the committee the whole take place. Member vice chair, fault, state my council member feared, on favor, please say aye. Say aye. Oh, same sign. Here is none, then motion is carried, go into the lead the whole, seven, so three, three, city clerk, who's not clerk, lead us down.
Absolutely, absolutely. Our first two presentations we've made by our city clerk, Daniel Tidy. Hello, Mayor, Major Council. I've got two items on the caucus agenda for tonight. The first one is our annual codification update. So, so every year, year, there's point in the year when we reach out to a consultant that works at American Legal Publishing. They handle all of our codified ordinances online and in paper. So, so throughout the year, we adopt the ordinances where we update our code. Usually in one large batch is when we send all these updates to. So throughout the summer, I was working with American Legal Publishing to get this ready for Calci's review. And at this point, we've worked with sending the updated code amendments. We're ready to update the online code as well as receiving hard copies. So the only, the reward I'm asking for is that we formally work on our codification updates, our placement pages. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, thank you.
And then next up is a list of liquor permit transfer application for nineteen forty Fair Grove Avenue. The liquor permits are C one and C two liquor permits. These are for, for the sale of prepackaged beer and wine products consumed off premises. The Health Department, Fire and Fire Departments did not have any objections to this application. To the recommendation within your report is to not object to this premise. Do we have any questions about this item?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up for items three and four will be a presentation by our Health Director, Cindy Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor, and the council members. I'm here to speak to you tonight about two recommendations concerning health improvement. The first is a recommendation concerning proposed fees, changes to our private water system, our sewage treatment system and our gray water recycling system programs. Our methodology has worked, it's active. Per the Ohio Industrial Code, our private water system, sewage treatment system and gray water recycling system program fees are either decreasing or staying the same. The advisory board tells approved of proposed fees on July twenty second. This shows our private water is a proposed fee, fees. And this slide here shows our private water proposed fees in relationship to other local health departments in our area. Our fees are either less or in line with other local health departments. This slide here shows our sewage treatment systems and our gray water recycling system proposed fees. This slide is a comparison fee for those same fees. And again, these fees are either less or in line with other local health departments. Do you have any questions? The second recommendation regarding our health department is concerning amendments and supplements to Part seventeen, the health code. The Law Department and I worked together reviewing the current health code. The last time it was reviewed was in twenty fourteen. The amendments and supplements that are proposed were presented to the ordinance review committee on October sixteen. The ordinance, the ordinance review, review, commission, motion, motion, that's literally for, for. This slide, slide is a summary of those proposed changes. Certain chapters are amended for clarification. Certain chapters are repealed to provide clarity and compliance with our state codes. We are implementing a civil enforcement process and then there are formatting changes for easier reading and understanding. This is a chart that shows exactly which chapters are being amended and repealed. You have any questions?
Mr. Mayor. Cindy, this was several hundred pages, so I went through and looked at a lot of the strike throughs. The two, though. The two, though, of the mass gatherings and the swimming pools, they're repealed, but there are new sections going in.
Also, what's happening with the swimming pool? And um, it's actually the sewage treatment system and gray water recycling system. Those are actually implemented through our state um, Ohio revised code and Ohio administrative code sections. We actually function off those codes um, when we implement everything here in the city of Hamilton. And those two sections are actually out of date with the current codes. So uh, we're looking to repeal those, but also implement the state codes that are uh, that we will keep in compliance.
Okay, that's what I was making sure there's something going to replace it. We're not just doing away with the rules.
Correct, correct. Default. Actually, what we're implementing right now is our state codes.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Uh, next up for agenda item number five will be a presentation by our planning director, Ms. Lauren Nelson.
Good evening, I am here just quickly in front of you for number five is the disposition of a piece of property that the city owns on Hensley Avenue. Uh, this parcel map, you can see it's basically the corner property of Crawford Woods Elementary. So this property is still owned by the city. The school district has been maintaining it for uh, since the school was built, basically, and has reached out and has interest in in officially acquiring this property so they can make some improvements to it. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
Next up for item number six, be a presentation by our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Jody Gunderson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, residents of Hamilton. Uh, the item that I'm bringing before you tonight is a recommendation relative to request for local tier tax abatement through community reinvestment area. Mount Healthy Holdings LLC. Uh, the tenant of the building would be Coolidge Plus. Coolidge Plus is currently located in building down in Leonard Wall, right next to Kyvac. Kyvac's been expanding and growing, which is great. So is this company right alongside them to the point though that Kyvac need more of building than these uh, Coolidge Plus needed to find a different place to uh, conduct business. This is a project that was just recently brought to the planning commission and gained approval. The project investment itself is ten million dollars. Important part of this is this is a retention project, thirty nine full-time positions, nearly uh, four million dollars in payroll. They will be adding six full-time jobs um, over three years um, in a new payroll, three hundred fifteen thousand dollars. The one thing that I would say about this is Darren Ward is the owner. He's been very good about not overpromising and to be quite honest with you, uh, when he came to the city, we recruited back in, I believe it was twenty thirteen. I think they thought they were going to grow in that space and never run out of space that they're currently in. They've done so well as a business in their growth that they've been able to now be forced to look at at building their own building, which is a good problem to have um, for one of our local businesses. And at that time, they had a fraction of the jobs that they currently do have. So I fully anticipate that they will continue to grow even beyond the jobs that they are promising. We're asking for the council and to approve or will be asking them to approve the property tax exemption for sixty percent for fifteen years and a job creation tax credit for fifty five percent over seven years. Questions? And China.
Thank you.
Thanks for the relationships. When you said they came and part of what you did back in two thousand and thirteen and their growth and where they're going and it ties into what Kyvac wants to do and things like that. So thanks for building those bridges for us. It's great stuff. And I would say too, with the council in the city, I I think the biggest compliment a an existing business can provide a community is when they have the opportunity to expand, they can expand anywhere. They chose to expand in Hamilton because of the relationship they have with the city, so. Thank you.
Next up for items seven and eight will be a presentation by our Director of Residence Services, Mr. Adam Hales.
Evening, Mayor Mueller, members of council. Um, I'm going to talk to you tonight about our refuse curbside refuse and recycling uh, transfer station contract as well as our refuse rates for next five years. So our current contract with Rumkey expires at the end of this year. We advertise terms for a new contract in September. And Rumkey, the services that we advertised in the contract are identical to what we currently have um, with our existing contract. And Rumkey was the only vendor who submitted a bid. Rumkey's bid for the new five-year contract, which will go through twenty twenty nine totaled uh, just short of twenty six million, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, for context, our existing contract that ends this year, uh, the total was eighteen million, just over eighteen million dollars. Um, I think it's important to note that the contract that they're op- we're operating on now with Rumkey was an extension of a contract that was signed in two thousand and fifteen. So really, we're we're kind of operating on two thousand and fifteen uh, prices from Rumkey. Uh, and this has been the first time in uh, about ten years that we've had to true up the rates. The new cost of the the proposed contract over the old cost uh, is a forty six percent increase. A couple highlights. We are going to be able to continue the transfer station voucher program, which allows residents uh, or customers to go to the transfer station one time per year and drop off a residential load of trash at no cost. All they need to do is take their utility bill or driver's license with them and provide proof of residency. They'll be able to drop off one time a year. Uh, if everybody and if every customer in the city did that, it would be a four hundred eighty four thousand dollar value. Uh, currently, we're only a hundred fifty residents per month are taking advantage of that. So about sixteen, seventeen hundred uh, residents per year. And we have twenty, twenty-two thousand residential refuse accounts. So um, I would encourage our residents to take advantage of that program. It's it's a great value as part of the contract. Um, the other, the other item of note uh, in the contract is we would like to transition to Rumkey branded brown trash carts instead of our blue trash carts. Currently, Rumkey is replacing any carts that are broken. Uh, the city has to pay for any carts that are lost, stolen or missing. Um, we're currently spending seventy, eighty thousand dollars on lost, stolen or missing carts. I would like to return that all to Rumkey, have them cover our lost, stolen, missing, missing and broken carts. Uh, and it'll save us about eighty thousand dollars a year going forward. The only difference is we don't have the blue carts with the city logo on it. Uh, it'll be brown Rumkey. The sizes remain the same. Um, and if we do go that route, it's not, Rumkey will not exchange all the carts all at once. So as the blue carts break, um, Rumkey or go missing or stolen, Rumkey will replace it with a brown one um, and systematically roll them out uh, over time. Any questions on the contract itself with Rumkey? The next item are the refus- the monthly refuse rates for residents and commercial customers. Um, the current rates, monthly rates that we're operating with were last adjusted in twenty twenty one. Uh, since that time, inflation alone has increased by twenty one percent. If you adjusted our, our current rate is nineteen dollars and seventeen cents a month. If you adjusted that for inflation, in twenty twenty four, that would come out to twenty-three dollars and seven cents a month. The biggest drivers behind the proposed rate increases are inflation and then the large increase, relatively large increase from Rumkey on the new contract. Uh, these would be the proposed residential rates over the next five years. In order to meet uh, the expenditures that we have budgeted in the refuse fund over the next five years, we have to set the rates at these amounts. Context, we have just shy of twenty-two thousand uh, regular residential customers. And then we have thirty-eight low-income customers. That's why we have two different residential rates. The residential, uh, the low-income residential rate increases, I believe, by nineteen percent over the last uh, the current rate, and then it stays flat for the next five years. Whereas you'll see incremental increases in the rest of the rates going forward. These are the rates for our commercial customers. We have three different classifications of uh, commercial refuse customers. We have customers who get one collection a week, customers who get three collections per week, and customers who get five collections per week. Currently, the city of Hamilton or the Quickstrike team uh, is picking up the customers with five collections per week. Most of those are on High, on High Street. Um, in order to save a little bit of money, uh, Resident Services Department will also be picking up those fourteen accounts that get collected three times per week. Here are some comparables of area monthly residential refuse rates. Hamilton is not, not the highest. But we are in the upper third. I would say we're in, we're in striking distance or a reasonable range of everybody. Fairfield is a bit of an outlier. They are operating on a ten-year contract with Rumkey that was signed in two thousand and fifteen, which is why you see their rate at fifteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Any questions on the rates? Like.
And last up for agenda item number nine will be a presentation from our Director of Engineering and Director of Businesses, of Business Services, Alan Messer and Christine Carr.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. What we're proposing here today is a change in the rate plan for the stormwater system. The primary reasons for this are better reliability and proved safety of that system throughout town. The system itself for the the stormwater fee started in two thousand and two. Prior to that, there was no dedicated stormwater revenue. And at that time, the stormwater fee was set at three dollars and sixty cents. This is a summary of some of the things that the stormwater system includes. Besides the conveyance and the flood protection that most people think of, um, and also contributes to the health, the retention ponds and the requirements that we have for new development and improves the water quality. We have over a hundred miles of a storm system and some of it dates back to the eighteen hundreds. We still have a mile and a half of stone storms, storms who are out there within our system um, that we maintain. Some of which is undersized. The city, if you think about how cities progress, it typically start at the river and and work outward in the pipes that served in the early nineteen hundreds. The city, as it was at the time, weren't necessarily sized for the future expansion. Um, we have certain EPA requirements the city must abide to. We have our own EPA permit for our stormwater system, and that requires us to meet certain um, state and federal requirements there. Uh, a lot of what we currently spend stormwater fees on is replacing work associated with the street paving. Um, it's, it's an extremely big portion of that. We want to get ahead of that paving so that we don't have breaks um, under the pavement in the future and have to tear it back up. The last rate increase he did was in two thousand and twenty. And at that time, it was based on a rate study that was conducted in two thousand and nineteen, which recommended a much higher rate than what was put into place. And at that time, went from three dollars and sixty cents to um, eventually five dollars over a certain period of time. The reason it wasn't higher at the time was because it, we, we didn't feel it was right to jump into that much higher rate um, right off the bat. The main reason for this recommendation is that we become more proactive. Right now, we're we're largely reactive in our stormwater. Like I mentioned, we do a lot. As we're doing a paving program or complaint base, but I'd like to get out there ahead of things and uh, do more proactive replacements. You can see at the bottom of the slide here that the recommended rate for twenty twenty-three, based on two thousand and nineteen, which didn't foresee some of the high inflation that we had post-COVID, was ten dollars and seventeen cents. But we actually have a rate um, in place of five dollars. This is just a fancy chart that shows you that inflation. We were accustomed to two and three percent inflation, then saw it spike in nearly ten percent post-COVID. And then this is the real reason. This tells the story of why we want to do it. The upper left is a pipe that was actually in service under Northwest Washington prior to having a small sinkhole fortunately over in the grassed area, which revealed the condition of it. That particular piece came out, but most of it was salvageable. And we do have nine miles of this corrugated metal within our system. A lot of what this rate increase would go towards is lining that. Because if we catch it now and we line it, then we can do it for approximately half the cost of what it takes, what it is, if you get to the point that it looks like that and you have to replace it in its entirety. Uh, the center, center picture is actually from Milliken and D, and that's one of our old stone storm sewers that was still in service until earlier this year. The upper right is an example of what can happen if, if you have uh, sinkholes over these lines, if they're unattended. And then, as is the, the lower right, that was actually from Eden Park Drive. That was a large, also corrugated metal pipe that collapsed very suddenly and caused that dip in the sidewalk. And we are what people mostly think of storm, where we are going to continue to address and have been addressing over the years, the uh, the flooding and the the conveyance aspect of it. I'll stay up here for questions. Uh, I'll turn it over now to Christine Carr, Director of Business Services, to give you more specifics on where it will be spent.
Hi, good evening. So the rates that we are proposing would support not only um, the increased operating and maintenance costs that we're experiencing, but also on average, um, two point nine million in capital improvements. So a majority of that is going to be on capital projects that are lining, replacement or upsizing of the storm sewer sewers, as Alan mentioned. Um, but also there is some capital equipment that is needed in a system too for things like services like streets we've been leaf collection, um, dump trucks and back. So with this rate plan, some of our key goals were to one, develop rate plans that maintain the financial integrity of the stormwater system, fully support our O and M needs, maintain healthy fund balances based on GFOA guidelines, minimize the financial impacts to our customers, um, but also setting a rate plan that allows us to develop capital improvement plans that help us ensure safe, reliable service and to be more proactive. So the stormwater fee is charged as a flat fee per month. So it's not something that varies with any type of consumption like our four utilities. It is charged based on a rate per ERU, which is equivalent residential unit, which is a calculation of square footage of impervious area at a property. So any single family home um, or like one apartment unit is one ERU. So any single-family home or like one apartment unit is one ERU, so they are charged currently five dollars per month. Non-residential are charged based on the number of ERUs at that property, and the number of ERUs at a property is based on a calculation done by the engineering department based on that ERU, a square footage of impervious area. So what our recommendation is, is a two-dollar increase to the monthly rate in two thousand twenty-five, so take it to seven dollars per month, and a two-dollar increase in January of two thousand twenty-six, which would take it to nine dollars on. So as far as customer impact for residential users, that'd be two dollars a month in two thousand twenty-five increase, and then a two-dollar increase in two thousand twenty-six. The commercial impact is going to vary pretty widely, just because there's, every property is so different. There's pretty big range in ERUs per property. So here, we wanted to give you kind of a snapshot of what an average residential utility bill looks like currently for Hamilton customers. So that's going to be that bar on the left. The middle bar is going to be Hamilton utility customer in October of two thousand twenty-five, so trying to look at where we are today and where we would be a year from now. And then the right bar is going to be a comparison of what not Hamilton utility customers might be paying for those services. So total, we're looking at projecting an increase of fourteen forty-two per month in two thousand twenty-five. That's going to be comprised of five dollars and sixty-one cents for refuse, two dollars from stormwater, two twenty-two water, dollar eighty-two sewer. So those were both rate plans that were approved in two thousand twenty-two, and two dollars and seventy-seven cents for gas, and that was approved earlier this year. And as far as our, our comparables in that right bar chart, electric and gas is going to be from the PUCO utility rate survey, such as the average of sixteen other Ohio cities. The water sewer and storm is based on the city of Pickwa survey, which looks at other communities in Southwest Ohio. And then the refuse comp is based on some of the data that Adam found while they were looking at the refuse contract. So our proposed timeline for this would be first reading November sixth, second reading November thirteenth, and a vote, thirty-eight waiting period, and then implement January first. And we did take the same presentation to the PUC at the October meeting, and they opted to go ahead and but make a vote of support, and they voted unanimously five-zero to support this recommendation. With that, if you have any questions?
Questions? And that concludes our presentations.
Okay, I'll set the motion at the committee's hold be closed. So the council member, then second by council member Ryan, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at seven oh one. I'll set the motion at the regular meeting, be reeve vein.
Second.
Holman, second by council member Fear, roll call.
Vote on that motion, please.
Moller, yes.
Holman, yes.
Ryan, yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yeah.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
You. I'll set the motion. Already the reports like a second agenda. Mr. Ware.
Vice Mayor Pollan.
Motion that with the exception of that, and so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and get further recommendations.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pollan, Senate Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at seven oh two. Now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items and our motion.
Ware.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the note being made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a pretty copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second. Councilmember Nab, Senate Councilmember Ryan, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at seven oh three. Now go to pending legislation, agenda item number ten. I believe in ordinance involving some new classifications.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR two thousand twenty-three dash twelve dash one oh six, adopted December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as amended from time to time to add certain new classifications and pay ranges related to an administrative reorganization, second reading.
Mr. Ware.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. The council member Vaughn, Senate Councilmember Ryan. Question or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller, yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Or it's adopted, seven zero.
We go to agenda item number eleven, second even ordinance involving employment agreement, the head director.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an employment agreement with the executive director of development and waiving certain provisions of chapter one eighty-one of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio relative to employee fringe benefits with regard to execution of said agreement, second reading.
Vice Mayor Pollan. Take a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pollan, Senate Councilmember Vaughn. Questions? Especially. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Or it's adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number twelve, second even ordinance involving employment agreement, executive director of strategy and personnel.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an employment agreement with the executive director of strategy and personnel and waiving certain provisions of chapter one eighty-one of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio relative to employee fringe benefits with regard to execution of said agreement, second reading.
Mr. Ware.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, Senate Councilmember Ryan. Questions on this one? Comments?
Hey.
Roll call vote.
Moller, yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Or it's adopted, seven zero.
You. Go to agenda item number thirteen, second even ordinance involving employment agreement, executive director of neighborhood service.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an employment agreement with the executive director of neighborhood services and waiving certain provisions of chapter one eighty-one of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio relative to employee fringe benefits with regard to execution of said agreement, second reading.
Mr. Ware.
Councilmember Vaughn.
And will the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Senate Councilmember Vaughn, Senate Councilmember Lauer. Question, questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Holman. Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Or it's adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number fourteen, second even ordinance involving an amended employment agreement with the executive director of infrastructure.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amended employment agreement with the executive director of infrastructure and waiving certain provisions of chapter one eighty-one of the city of Hamilton, Ohio's codified ordinances relative to employee fringe benefits with regard to execution of said agreement, second reading.
Ware. Vice Mayor Pollan. Take a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pollan, Senate Councilmember Ryan. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Or it's adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number fifteen, second even ordinance involving an amended employment agreement, executive director of public safety.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amended employment agreement with the executive director of public safety and waiving certain provisions of chapter one eighty-one of the city of Hamilton, Ohio's codified ordinances relative to employee fringe benefits with regard to execution of said agreement, second reading.
Mr. Ware.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, Senate Councilmember Lauer. Any comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Or it's adopted, seven zero.
But to agenda item number sixteen, second reading of the ordinance involving the Hamilton Community Foundation and Butler County Finance Authority.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Hamilton Community Foundation Incorporated and the Butler County Finance Authority in regards to the Hamilton Economic Development Fund, second reading.
Vice Mayor Pollan. Take a motion, the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pollan, Senate Councilmember Ryan. Questions, comments? Next one. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moller.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Matt, Ryan.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Or it's adopted, seven zero.
Who the eyes, who the audience of city manager? Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, there's two things. Starting the first one, I have a couple pictures to, I'll have the clerk pull up for my second point, but first point is this Saturday from eight AM to one PM, the second ward will be conducting a neighborhood cleanup. Uh, that is spearheaded by Bob Harris and a Southeast Civic Association. We're going to encourage all folks in the neighborhood to come out and participate in this neighborhood cleanup and then as well as all our, uh, other residents and neighbors across the city to, uh, to chip in and help out.
What's the timing again?
Eight AM to one PM. Additionally, um, I'd like to thank Edwin Porter, our executive director of infrastructure, for him and his team, um, who was gracious enough to allow myself and members of the city manager's, uh, office, Mallory Matty, to accompany him to our hydroelectric facilities, uh, both Greenup and Meldol. We were able to meet with Jeff Martin, who's the manager of operations at both Hydros, as well as the superintendents, Kenny Hilger and Jim Crawford. It was great to, to visit, to see these facilities. Uh, it's really amazing and, and it's easy to lose track of the fact that, uh, more than a hundred miles from town, we have city crews who are working around the clock, providing renewable, uh, green energy to, to our residents and many other communities across, um, the region as well. What I can share is that the work that they do is incredibly challenging under some very difficult, uh, conditions at times. They're working with, and I think the one picture shows, um, inside, uh, one of the turbine turbines, um, there at the hydro, um, the incredible mass of, of these facilities, um, and, um, yet how, um, moving some of this equipment is incredibly heavy, weighs, weighs several tons, uh, there, it's in tight confined spaces. And, uh, despite the difficulty of that, they're also able to, uh, manage and maintain very, very, very small, uh, tolerances of, um, of some of this equipment down to thousands of an inch. So, uh, congratulations to them for the work that they do every day, and that was just an opportunity for us to say thank you and congratulate them. Thank you, Mayor.
All units of city council.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
Uh, tonight is the two thousand twenty-four Bill Wilk's Educator of the Year, uh, presentation. There are nineteen teachers, uh, in the city of Hamilton who have been recommended for this award. I wish them all the best. They do a great job. Obviously, our numbers have improved in Hamilton City Schools. Baden continues to operate at a very high level. Our athletic programs across the board in Hamilton as well as Baden are very successful, and I think that is a great, I think it puts an exclamation point on us again, so.
Excellent.
Very happy about that. Um, also with Operation Pumpkin, I'd like to recognize one of our local artists who, um, carved some of the pumpkins, Chris Jackson. Um, he does a great job. He is a local artist here. He has many things that he sells. Um, he was also selected by the Food Network to, um, compete in Alaska for some of the, uh, ice sculptures. But he competed here. I think he did pretty well, um, and there was a lot of competition there. So that was something great, brought some national recognition to the city of Hamilton. So I appreciate Chris Jackson and all the artists that came out.
Great. Anyone else?
Mr. Ware. I just wanted to announce that, uh, the protocol meeting on Monday evening, one of our seventeen neighborhoods in the community or in the city, announced that they have established a fund through the Hamilton Community Foundation for community members to donate, to give back, to do things that better the community. And that was really unique to see something like that happen, that a neighborhood is now established so everyone can give back and see a change in their community because of how they have committed to it. And, um, Frank Downey leads protocol, of course, and I was very proud of this notion, and I'm very excited to see that happen.
It was very exciting meeting, and the council member Nab was there, but if Frank Downey ever wrote a book about how to strengthen, build up a neighborhood, that'd be, that should be a red book by every city, because not only did he start up protocol and do some other things, he's taken up beyond his. It'll be his legacy beyond his lifetime. He's going to continue to help Lindelwold.
It is council member shared, uh, councilman Ron shared, uh, ten dollars, twenty dollars, thirty dollars, uh, to be contributed, uh, you know, focus, uh, to the protocol fund at the community foundation. That money then accrues and, and continues to earn interest, uh, to be able to have different projects and and different, uh, beautification things happen within Lindelwold community. So it's, it's one of the first uh, that's ever been designated to a neighborhood for a specific function, and our thanks to Frank for his leadership in, in, uh, Lindelwold and the protocol team for doing everything that they do in our community. It's great stuff.
Anyone else? When I mentioned, whenever there's a convention in town, that's kind of me. You get a lot of people gathering in front of the building, getting their picture taken. And all of a sudden, that's a convention. It was that way last night at Pinball Garage. All this large crew walking towards Pinball and getting their picture taken down the front. And it was the Alliance for Community Media, uh, that should have folks who are like Steve Colwell to agree, but I even told the crew, you know, Steve Colwell is, is the best. And, uh, but there, and at the Marriott, I think, they had a mixer last night at Pinball. I gave them a list of restaurants to go to. It's pretty neat. You see probably at least thirty-plus people that were just there. Pinball, and those were the early arrivals. So thanks to Steve Colwell, and hopefully he's going to watch this tonight so we could hear us.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
In addition to that, this morning, I also welcomed them, and one of the first things they said was the mayor was at Pinball Garage last night, and I said, oh, why, it doesn't surprise me. The mayor is everywhere. Um, but I said, he isn't here this morning, so you got any stories for me? And they laughed, but I knew where you were. You had another commitment, but, um, and they were very appreciative. They said, in all the conferences that they've had, they've never had a city welcome them. They said, we sort of show up and then we go, and I, I was very pleased, and they found this to be very, very welcoming, and they're here through tomorrow.
Yeah. This dude did a video to kind of say, visit Hamilton, and just like with the firefighters, those things work. His, his video skills, his, his excellence does bring people to this town.
Well, and I also said, and the credit to TV Hamilton, this is all about communities and media and how you connect within your community. And when I came on council, I said, you know, we don't have hundreds of people sitting here in the audience, but because of TV Hamilton, hundreds, if not thousand or more view this every week, and so we are engaging with the residents, and I think that's important. And many of them, yes, shaking their heads, many wanting to do this, but I think we're kind of, you know, leading the way in some of these things, and thanks to TV Hamilton.
All right, anything else on council for audience of councils? All right, Mr. Manager, we're going to have an executive session tonight?
No.
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 And one changes his mind, let's get the guy out of here. Adjourn to the security. Okay. Then is there a motion to council adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pollan, Senate Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion to adjourn.
Are we sure?
Talk faster.
Moller. Moller.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Was adopted, seven zero.
Seven eighteen. I don't, that's what we, we're not going to be fake. See, I don't know what to do this minute, it's down and out. Thank you all for being here.